Thank you and good evening. Mayor, Tagan, Council. Brian Cluff with the city's current planning department and also here with Dan Worth to give a parking update for the Old Town area. So, parking in the Old Town area has always been a topic of interest in the community. It's been a couple of years since we've had a discussion on parking, so we wanted to give you a quick refresher and update on the parking situation in Old Town and just hit on a few key areas to make sure you have the latest information going forward. So before we get into the finer details, I'd like to start off at the policy level and highlight a few goals and policies that key into parking. So first off, the general plan 2035. You can see a policy there from the circulation element, recommending coordination of transportation, land use planning to enhance integrated, sustainable transportation systems to promote livable neighborhoods, economic vitality, safety, efficiency, mode of choice, and adequate parking. And then, under that, there are the zoning ordinance, which is one of the implementing documents to the general plan, bolsters that with its purpose statement, talking about provide adequate parking within the community and doing that without sacrificing urban design, which enhances the aesthetic environment. Moving on into the Old Town character area plan, there are several policies within the mobility chapter, talking about developing a park once environment in downtown, continuing to create new or adjust parking requirements within the Old Town area, maximize the use of existing parking supply as well as using a comprehensive parking management program. Going on to creating new parking supply through public-private partnerships, as well as maintaining the free parking in downtown, as well as seeking opportunity to provide shaded parking through landscaping and structures. Moving on, we also have our Old Town Scottsdale Urban Design and Architectural Guidelines that also key into parking elements, into the context, design, and location. We don't want, we don't just want parking provided, we want it to be well-designed and fit in with the surrounding context of the area as well. And then it also goes into further detail of the actual design of parking structures and that interface with the built environment and the pedestrian environment. So all that kind of flows into some of the guiding policies that we've used for decades in managing parking in the Old Town area. And first of all is maintaining free parking in the Old Town area. Every once in a while, you know, someone brings up the idea of charging for parking, but we've always maintained the principle that free parking is very valuable to the community and we've held to that. Also providing options for small lot owners to reinvest in their property without parking becoming a deal killer. That is, giving them opportunities to provide parking elsewhere if they're not able to provide it on their lot. Also bringing more people to downtown to support businesses. This is one of the primary functions of everything we do, is to promote vitality of businesses in downtown, and convenient parking is a big part of that. Also promote efficient use of parking, recognizing that it's increasingly expensive and a valuable resource, we want to make sure we have full use of what's available. Also providing adequate parking within an acceptable walking distance. So the idea here is that taking more of a park once and walk approach, you might not be able to always park right in front of the shop or the restaurant that you're wanting to go to, but as long as there's parking located within an acceptable walking distance. Acknowledge parking needs in downtown as well as anticipating future needs. We don't want to excessively overpark or underpark. Space is scarce and areas that's being used for parking is areas that can't be used to support businesses, so we need to manage that accordingly. Lastly, acknowledging special events and circumstances that might impact parking, such as spring training games in Canal Convergence, special events like that that can create parking shortages in some areas of the downtown. And one of the things in planning that we always talk about is you don't park for the day after Thanksgiving. So if you do that, then you have a bunch of empty spaces that are empty 364 days of the year. So we want to make, want to manage and handle this, utilize efficiently the spaces that we have and make sure that they're used fully throughout the year. So some of the key items that we just wanted to cover with this presentation is the parking supply in Old Town, some recent code updates, and then going into some detail on some of the past improvement districts in the Old Town area, some future parking plans, as well as a parking management update. So getting into the parking supply, this is an exhibit here showing the Old Town area highlighting all the public parking garages and lots in the Old Town area. There's over 30 public lots and structures distributed through the Old Town area containing more than 6,200 parking spaces. You can see from the map, they're pretty well-distributed throughout the Old Town area, both in large and small quantities. The idea being to provide space within that walkable distance, preferably for the park once and walk approach. Adding to that map here, the highlighted yellow areas are identifying improvement districts within the Old Town area. Those are the two improvement districts that were there, and the garages and lots that changed to red are parking areas that were constructed using those funds with those original districts, which supplied 762 spaces in the Old Town originally. Then on-street, parking, this exhibit here highlighted, blue shows the on-street parking throughout the Old Town area. So on-street was the original downtown parking. When Scottsdale was developing, this was the supply for Old Town. City's first parking requirements were adopted in 1962, but most of the Old Town area was still exempt from having to provide parking off-site or onsite until 1969, when ordinance update required that they start providing parking onsite for expansions and new development. But there are still, there's 2,300 on-street parking spaces in Old Town, and there's a lot of businesses in Old Town that still rely heavily on those on-street spaces. So in all, including the public lots and structures and on-street, there's more than 8,500 public parking spaces that are available to serve Old Town. And as we all know, the public parking is not the only parking available in Old Town. There's also more than 9,000 parking spaces and private parking lots within Old Town. The areas that you see highlighted in orange here are not all-inclusive, so they don't include every single private parking lot. And the 9,000 that's quoted here is limited to the main quadrants in Old Town. There's a lot of private lots that are further out north of Camelback and south of Osborne that also have a lot more parking. And all new development must provide required parking onsite, so these private parking lots will just continue to grow along with redevelopment. So some recent code updates. In February of 2020, the city council did provide direction to staff to coordinate a text amendment for strategic changes to the parking requirements in Old Town. That resulted in a text amendment that was approved in 2021 by the city council that keyed into these seven specific areas here. So the travel accommodations, it was adjusted to actually reduce the per-room rate, but it also adjusted the requirements to more specifically address ancillary uses that are within the hotel that might drive up the demand there. It also addressed multifamily residential, increasing the requirement in Old Town, as well as adding a guest parking ratio. It added a new office type with a, for a call center designation that had a higher parking ratio than what a normal office would call for to account for the higher density of employees within the call centers. It also talked about the, or addressed the downtown overly parking waiver. This was a waiver that allowed certain waivers for additions to businesses in Old Town. What once was be able, were you able to waive 2,000 square feet of additional floor area was reduced to 1,000. And also there was a waiver for you to add residential units, up to two units, without adding any parking, and that waiver was eliminated. Also, the in-lu parking was addressed as part of this text amendment. It eliminated the ability to purchase permanent in-lu parking spaces, limiting that only to leases. It also limited the use of the in-lu parking program to properties that were less than 20,000 square feet in area. It also touched on some special improvement requirements related to structured parking to incentivize structured parking within the downtown area. And some of those recent code updates have been put to work on projects that have been approved recently. This one, 3,200 Scottsdale, is a mixed-use development that was, has received city council approval for zoning. It'll be moving through the development review board process. It's on Scottsdale Road north of Earl. As a result of those code updates, this project was required to provide 59 more parking spaces than what would have been required before that update. Another example project here that has received zoning approval is the Artisan located at Marshall and Indian School Road. So as a result of those changes to the code, it was required to provide 30 additional parking spaces than what was originally required. Another key aspect of this project is the city was able to partner with this developer to also include additional public parking, 55 public parking spaces within the garage that are additional to that 30 that was provided. So at this point, getting into the improvement districts discussion, I'm going to turn it over to Dan Worth.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Dan Worth, Public Works Director, and I have to say that after the first four hours of this meeting, it's a pleasure to be up here talking about something relatively non-controversial like downtown parking. Brian gave a great overview of a lot of issues surrounding Old Town parking. I would like to add some specific detailed context regarding parking in particular, in a particular part of Old Town, which has frequently been the subject of discussion. Brian mentioned improvement districts. The city formed two parking improvement districts in the mid-'70s. They're shown on this graphic. One was referred to as the Fifth Avenue Parking Improvement District. The other is the East-West Maine Parking District. These focused on areas of the city that at the time had a shortage of parking. Property owners and businesses had difficulty because of the configuration of the area, providing adequate parking to meet code requirements for their properties. So one of the solutions that we took advantage of at that time, nearly 50 years ago, was the formation of these two improvement districts. I'm going to focus on one of them, the East-West Maine District, the larger one on the graphic. The way these worked, the districts paid to obtain land and make improvements to generate additional public parking in the area within the district, and the property owners within the district who had a shortfall, who were not providing the full amount of parking for their use, were assessed a portion of the cost of acquiring and then making the improvements. And the assessment was proportionate to the amount of their parking deficiency. This is a large graphic, the assessment map that was used for the East-West Maine Assessment District, Improvement District. You can see the resolution that was passed at the time, laid out the purpose, open and lay out off-street parking sites. There's little news clipping in the lower right-hand corner that I felt was interesting, from the gentleman who was the president of the Chamber of Commerce at the time, who stated that not only was this a great thing, but he made the observation that at some point in time, probably would be used in later years for the erection of multi-story parking. That was not the vision at the time, but Mr. Saber recognized that that was certainly something that could come to fruition in the future. And I will add that one of those locations, Second and Brown in the lower right-hand corner, southeast corner of the district, we've done that, and we've built structured parking there, and what was acquired is surface parking through this district. Another one in the northwestern area of the district, the First Avenue Lot, we've been asked to provide structured parking, and the reason we haven't gone forward to that is it's just too small to build a viable parking structure. But there is certainly a precedent for building structured parking on these. Before I get into, I actually want to show some snapshots in time, but before I do that, I just want to make sure that it's clear, what the district did was it assessed owners to pay a share of buying land and improving it for surface parking. What the district did not do, it did not put any restrictions, once the city used the funds to buy land and put parking on it. It did not create any restrictions beyond that for what the city had to do or could or could not do with the lands that they acquired with that district. The parking spots are not and never were permanent. They were bought, paid for, and they've been used for close to 50 years now, but there was no commitment, they were never going to do anything else. It also did not create any kind of ownership rights for the property owners who paid into it. They paid their proportion to get the improvements made, but it didn't give them any right. They've been granted credits for parking since then based on the involvement in the improvement district, but it's all public parking. It all belongs to the public and is managed that way. So this is the first of several snapshots that I'm going to give you to show the evolution over time of what's happened in the area of that improvement district. And you can see, the district is bounded by Indian School on the north, Second Street on the south, what is now Goldwater on the west, and the Civic Center Plaza on the east. The five areas that you see are the five original areas. The numbers that you see superimposed on them are the numbers of parking spots that were in each of those areas. In 1972, when we bought these, and it was actually '74, I believe, they had to make a second run at the resolution to acquire, and then they had to do the process to give residents an opportunity to challenge and all that associated with the formation of a district. Seventy-four by the time they actually started buying the land and making the improvements, but this is what we got, 556 spaces spread over the five lots. I will move forward a few years to 1979, and some things happened. And I'm going to point out changes at several points in time, but by 1979, if you look in the lower right-hand corner, not part of the district, we had added a pretty substantial parking garage, 357 spaces. This garage was built with general obligation bond funds that were associated with the Center for Performing Arts. It's commonly called the Center for Performing Arts Garage. It's certainly built to support that function, as well as other functions in the Civic Center, but it is also certainly available round the clock as public parking adjacent to the area of the improvement district. So you can see how many spaces we added with that. 1993, a couple of other things that happened. If you look at the lower left, the southwest corner of the district, there was actually a reduction in spaces at the lot that I've labeled as Stage Brush. It's next to the Stage Brush Theater. We built our transit center, and when we built the transit center, we lost some of the spots that were in that originally purchased parcel of land, but we also partially offset that loss by acquiring land to the west, adjacent to the original parking lot and adding that. The net was still a net loss of 84 spaces, but we still provide parking spaces in that area. The other location I want to bring your attention to is Second and Brown, the southeast corner. That was originally 50 spaces. We simply bought more land adjacent to it during that timeframe and added more spaces and brought it up to almost twice as much, 94. And then you can see the running tally in the upper right. 2005, we did a couple of very significant additions. One was that same Second and Brown location. What started as 50, what we added land to to bring it up to 94, now houses 225 spaces in a structured garage, two-floor garage. And then in the lower left, when we, well, we entered into a partnership with a developer. Brian mentioned the opportunity to do that with our Artisan Development. We started doing that back in 2004 with Main Street Condos. So when that project developed, we had a development agreement that had them build and provide for public parking 130 spaces. So we again gained back some of the spaces that we had taken away previously with that transit center. And you can see in the upper right, by this point in time, what had started at 556 spaces was now over 1,000 spaces for that same area, an increase of about 87% over what we started with. Again, Brian mentioned the Artisan Development. We have concluded an agreement with that developer to provide 55, and we've paid for them, or we have committed to pay for them. We haven't paid for them. But an additional 55 spaces, we also got a commitment on the price, which is pretty significant, because the price we got a commitment to at $39,999.99 per space, that's fixed, and I guarantee you, it's costing them way more than that at this point in time when they go to construction and build those spaces. So we got a swinging deal. Same in the lower left with Museum Square, we got a commitment.
No, can, thank you, Dan. I just wanted to mention with the 225 there at Brown and Second Street, when that garage was put in with the Noriega.
Yes.
It was, it was, I was around when we approved that, but is it, and it was structured for additional floors, was it not?
It was, and we have done an assessment, and I'm going to show you some numbers later in the presentation.
Okay, okay. So, yeah, there's a footprint there where it says 225 at Second and Brown.
Yeah, 225 is now, but can be expanded.
Good, thank you.
And then the Museum Square, $45,000 a space for 155 public parking spaces. When that hotel develops, will be added to the inventory, and same thing, it's structured parking, it's below-grade structured parking, which is the most expensive parking you can buy. And we have paid already on that through the development agreement, the purchases and sale of the city property. A little about the costs. This takes all those things I just showed you, the original improvement district and the additions that I pointed out, tells you the number of spaces, gives you a cost, gives you a cost adjusted to $20.22, so you can compare apples to apples, looking at, you know, how much each of these added to our inventory and how much the cost was for adding each of these to the inventory. Cost per space, again, adjusted to $20.22. The improvement district spaces were cheap because, and, you know, it's not just because it was 46 years ago, it was cheap because they're the least expensive kind of spaces. We bought vacant land, didn't have to do any clearing, didn't have to do any demolition. We put in curb stops and a little bit of lighting, so the construction costs were minimal. So that was a bargain. The most expensive one on here is the Park and Corral, the Second and Brown Garage that the mayor was just referring to. And that was expensive because it includes a below-grade level, and below-grade parking is the most expensive kind of parking you can do. But because we designed it so we can add one or more levels above it, it's now giving us a pretty cost-effective alternative to create additional parking, which, again, I'm going to show you some numbers on the next slide. Just a quick comment on the funding. You can see in the lower right-hand corner, again, $20.22, $42 million plus have been invested in creating public parking in this area alone, not all of Full Town, just this area. Out of that $42 million, 10% came from the improvement district, and out of the 90% from other sources, about 84% of that came from citywide other sources, came from general obligation bonds that were paid for by residents citywide, from the general fund, or from transportation sales taxes, which, again, cover the whole city. There was a small portion, about 6%, $2.6 million, that came from within the downtown area through the Parking in Lou Fee program. A lot of that money was put into the Second and Brown parking garage. And then, just a little recap, Brian showed you many of these numbers in his presentation, just an idea of across all of Old Town, some of the structures that we've added, and you can see in the chart on the right how that inventory has grown over time since 1976, when we had those districts in place. And then this is what I mentioned a moment ago, future, we've already talked about Artisan. We have a commitment through a development agreement to build 55 additional spaces for us in that project. The Stage Brush is our building next door to where the Museum Square Hotel development will go, and as part of the development agreement with Museum Square, we have to reconfigure the entrance to the Stage Brush Theater. We've agreed to do that. We have a project in the CIP to do that. Part of that project is to reconfigure the parking that's associated with the Stage Brush Theater. We're going to take advantage of an area that's not currently used for parking. We're going to create a parking lot that has the median islands and the landscaping that we demand from developers when they build parking lots, and we're going to have a net increase of 30 spaces through that process. And then the Museum Square development, with the level of parking that we get through that development, are all happening. They're all either done deals with developers or on the CIP in the case of the Stage Brush. And then the last thing is bond 2019, $21 million roughly approved by the voters in 2019 for building downtown public parking structures, and we have used very little of it. We anticipate that we're going to spend $2.5 million of it to pay, when the time comes, for the parking that we're getting with the Artisan Development. That leaves 18.5 million to spend on what we wish to spend it on. I haven't been determined yet, and that's something that, you know, I think I broached this subject a couple of years ago at a previous retreat, and I got some feedback, but that was a pretty much a wait-and-see attitude. And if there's direction now, it'd be great. Here's some alternatives. We can do things that aren't listed as the alternatives, but to the mayor's comments, Second and Brown Garage, we can add two levels and create 207 additional spaces on a facility that houses 225 right now, almost double its capacity. We can go three levels up and create even more, and we can do both of those within the available amounts in that bond question, in that bond issuance. The other location that I have here with a couple of different options is in the northeast quadrant of the downtown, Stetson and Sixth Avenue, is a location where we have a surface parking lot that gets heavy use both daytime from businesses in the area and nighttime and weekends from people going to that area to patronize the establishments. But it's also a possibility for building structured parking, and you can see the amount of investment and the number of increased spaces that would generate. One of the downfalls we use in this area, and we can debate issues about where it needs to be, but one of the downfalls of using this is that there's already parking there. So we had a structured level or a couple of structured levels. You're not gaining as much because you're basically rebuilding that parking that's already there to build your garage. At Second and Brown, you don't have to rebuild anything, you're just putting a new deck on top of the existing, so the cost per space works out to be less. But that is, no, I have one more slide. Non-structured, non-infrastructure parking issues. And this is partially in response to some comments and suggestions that we did get from that retreat a couple of years ago where we talked about downtown parking. Just wanted to give you some brief updates on a couple of issues. One was a discussion of a shuttle, a trolley perhaps, and you heard from, I believe, Louise is still here. She was at one of our recent council meetings talking about the downtown trolley that we have put in place as a special event service for the spring training. And that is running, and we're collecting ridership data and assessing the performance of that, but that is partially in response to the desire to minimize people's need to park in and around the stadium. The second bullet is one that I think is really a positive step. The directional signs that we had in the past was not the blue circle with a P in the middle of it that visitors expect to see, because that's what they see in every other city in the country. We had our custom signs with desert-shaded beige and orange colors on them, didn't have the standard symbol, didn't say that the parking was free. It was difficult for people to find where the free public parking was. And that was a comment that we've gotten pretty much in every study that we've done. You've got lots of parking, it's hard to find for a lot of people. So in an effort to better utilize the parking that we have, we've gone through and in-place signs like the ones you see here that use the standard widely-recognized symbol. They're placed in strategic locations, like on Main Street where a lot of the shops are, up and down Scottsdale Road, and they direct people. And the other feature is right in the middle, free. We want people to know that it's free. You go to a garage, a lot of people expect that if they're going to park in a garage, they're going to have to pay for it, so they avoid it, and they look for an on-street spot. It's free, and we want to make sure people know that and they know where it is. And it's a little too early And it's a little too early to really do a lot of assessment as to how well that's working, but I know anecdotally, we see, I feel, we're, we're seeing more usage in, in some of the places like the existing Stagebrush Lot and the Main Street Condos parking garage. And then the last one, we do have the flexibility to adjust parking hours in some of the existing structures in order to discourage all-day parking, which, when that happens, it's usually attributed to people who are working downtown, not the people who are showing up downtown to spend their money in shops and restaurants. So having the ability to adjust that to, to be more appropriate to the people that we want to have access to that parking is, is certainly there, we are doing it, and that is something we're going to try to measure the effectiveness of as, as we go forward. So that concludes my presentation, and myself and Brian, obviously, are ready to address any kind of comments, questions, or...
Good, thank you. I'll go directly to public comment, so it's an opportunity to, I see two names, Bob Pejman and French Thompson, so go ahead, take three minutes.
Sure, can I put this here? Okay, Mayor Ortega, council members, actually, that, that was a very informative presentation because it took us through all the steps of what happened historically. The way I see it is that 1972 was a baseline where nothing existed except, no parking existed except for street parking. So what happened is that in 1972, the Improvement District created 556 spaces. In '79, the Los Alivos Lot, I'm assuming right here, was added, bringing the number to 913. And then, fast forward, I'm just going to fast forward to here, to 2005, because there was some reduction here, and I mean, this number here is when the Farmers Market was expanded. So that, so in the future though, the future means this, bringing it up to 1284 is because of the Museum Square underground and the Artisan, basically. And, but also note that even though we're gaining the 55 spaces on Artisan, that gravel lot is disappearing, and even though it wasn't a city lot, technically speaking, it's not really an addition, although we're happy that we're getting something. Here is a document I found from 1975, it's a pretty interesting document. If you look down here, East Main, West, E, East Main, West Main area, that's the area of Old Town, south of Indian School. It says the total deficiency of 1,530 spaces still existed. So back then, in 1974, that, it was noted that there was a deficiency of 1,530. So correlating this to what the presentation showed, with the additional parking from Museum Square and Artisan, we're brought up to 1284, that's on page 24 of the presentation. But back then, the deficiency was 1,530, so we're still short 243, assuming that there was no news, new use created. Now, we know that from 1974 to now, new use was created. All I'm trying to point out is that back then, there was a deficiency noted, and I'm glad that all these extra parkings have been added, but we're still below what was determined back then, just to put in perspective. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. So accordingly, I think French may have left, sorry. Okay, then I will close public comment. Moving on, I have Councilwoman Whitehead, Councilmember Durham, Councilmember Graham, and Janet. Councilmember Whitehead.
Yeah, I just, so thank you, Dan, great presentation. I also just want to thank all of my colleagues, only Mr. Graham wasn't on the council at the time, but we changed the parking code with a lot of input from our business community residents, and, oh, he was on planning, he's taking credit, just for the record. So, but the point is, is we did, we placed the, you know, we placed the burden of parking residential guests on, on the property owner, on the developer of that property, and so by doing so, we opened up, you know, we've reduced the burden on our downtown merchants, so I'm really pleased at how that worked out. I'm also really pleased at the hard, tough negotiations that we had with Museum Square, and some of you in the audience were involved in that, that resulted in a very, very discounted, excellent parking places in the future. So there's a lot of talk about all the money that, you know, overruns. There are lots of ways that the city has saved money, that's one of those. I also want to mention that the city council is very aware of surface parking and probably very resistant to allowing that to disappear for certain developments, Marilyn. And so we're all paying attention to parking, and, and by doing so, we're really saving tax dollars, we're making sure that we don't lose parking spaces for a particular private interest at the expense of the public, so I'm really pleased about that. Galleria, I'm very interested in that, plus I like your new signs. So I like the one hour, but we still don't have all those, the, the private part of that garage is still the upper floors, is that correct, Dan? Anybody? Dan?
I'm not sure that I can address that, but yes, the, the, there is a public portion of that garage, and there is a very underutilized portion of the garage that is not available to the public.
Not available to, I, you know, I, if we needed public parking, I would certainly want to negotiate with that building's owner. I famously rode my bike up and down every single one of those levels, like in the middle of the day on a really busy day before COVID ever happened, and it was completely empty. It was so, and there was a kid, guy eating lunch there, and I said, "Do you work here?" And he said, "Yes," and I said, "Where's your car?" And he said, "I'm not allowed to park here. I park in the public garage and take a shuttle." So that's something that I would like to look into. The, let's see, um, oh, are we doing anything with the shuttles? How did those shuttles work? There was a temporary, or there was some group that we had shuttling people between garages? How did that work out?
Mayor, Councilwoman Whitehead, we had an arrangement at a period of time with the, with a tenant in the Galleria that has since left to utilize one of our, well, two of our outlined parking areas. One is the one at Fifth Avenue and Goldwater, the other one was the Civic Center Library Garage. And, and it did get some usage. It was McKesson was the, the tenant in the Galleria.
Okay, McKesson was long gone.
Yeah, they're gone.
No, but they were long gone when I was visiting the empty parking garage, and it was a Yelp employee, but anyway, it doesn't matter. We, we do have a problem with Galleria, I'd like to still work on that. No, I was talking about, we had, there was a, a private business that was shuttling people during special events between parking garages, that I wonder if that worked.
Yeah, I have heard that there are, at least one private operator has done that. They didn't ask permission, that I'm aware of, they just did it. It's, they can make money, they're doing it.
I think that's fine, I just wondered if you had any data if it worked.
I, I don't have any data on that.
That's fine. Okay, I'm done.
Thank you, Councilmember Durham, and then Councilmember Graham.
Thank you, Mayor. Some of the things we've talked about in the past, I just wanted to check on those. We've discussed in the past having sort of colorful banners on some of the parking garages that would help direct attention. I, I think the signs that you pointed out tonight are a big improvement, but has there been any more consideration of sort of colorful banners hanging from a garage that would sort of make them very visible?
We can certainly look into that, but we haven't done anything in that direction.
Okay. Were we working on a parking app that would, for visitors, that would locate garages?
Councilmember Durham, we had a parking app that was in use for a period of time. I think it was probably a couple of years. We didn't have it in the garages, we had it in surface spots in the northeast quadrant of the downtown. The way the app worked was we had sensors under the pavement in each of the available street parking spots, and the sensors would tell the app if the spot was vacant. So if somebody driving around looking for parking could log into the app, find a vacant spot, drive to it without circling around and orbiting. Our, we collected data on the use. It really did not get a lot of use from people that were looking for parking. Frankly, the people who benefited the most from it were the police department, who were able to use it as a tool for identifying people who were exceeding time limits and citing them, which is good, but it did not make a big difference in, in terms, from the data that we had in terms of people better utilizing, better utilization rate of the available parking. So when it came time to renew with the owner of the app, we were debating whether or not it was worth it, and they solved the problem for us by going out of business. So that, that app is no longer in use. And in general, one of the things that we feel we learned is apps like that work really well where you have to pay for parking. You go to ASU and you have to use the app to find a spot and then pay for it. But if you don't have to pay for the parking, people generally don't, you know, go to the trouble of opening up the app to find the parking spots.
Thanks. Finally, what about Uber? I, I think the last session two years ago or so, we, we talked about possibly a staging area for Uber so that they wouldn't be taking up parking spots that the general public could use. Have you ever thought about that anymore?
We have, and the police department works very closely with us, and, and actually has the lead to a large degree on orchestrating the, the areas that we want to encourage the Uber drivers and the Lyft drivers to use in order to, to help alleviate traffic and parking problems, particularly in the northeast quadrant of the downtown. And it's difficult to force them to follow those rules, but it's an ongoing effort. We, we intend to continue to pursue that, to try to get them to utilize the streets in a way that doesn't take up an inordinate amount of parking. One of the things that we'd love to have them do is wait outside of the entertainment district area because they will wait in a parking spot until they get a call and take a parking spot that somebody else could be using.
Yeah, that's right.
Very difficult to force them to do that.
Yeah. All right, thank you, Mayor.
Councilmember Graham and Councilwoman Janet.
Brian and Dan, thank you for your presentation tonight. A few things I want to cover. We have lost some spots in the downtown by changing from angled to parallel parking. Do you agree?
I would be hard-pressed to give you an example of where that's happened. As I did the preparation for this presentation and looked at historical parking over the last 46 years, I was amazed by how consistent the on-street parking has been. A lot of the angled parking that we have now existed 46 years ago. So it, it may have happened, I'm not saying it hasn't, I'm just not aware of any.
Well, I can tell you, it happened on Saddlebag, at, you know, kind of that bar zone. I can tell you it happened there.
I don't doubt it.
Okay.
We did make some traffic configuration changes in that area.
I just, yeah, I'm just sensitive to that, and I think Ms. Council might be sensitive to that, and so please let us know if that's under consideration from changing from angled parking to parallel parking, because we all know that you get, how many angled parking spots do you get per every parallel? What do you, does anybody have that off the top of their head? Maybe they don't.
The ratio is roughly, generally, two to one, but there's, there's spaces where you don't get that because you can't have an angled spot as close to a driveway as you can a parallel spot.
Okay.
And things like that.
Um, you know, I was reading the bond language for the 2019 ballot, and we don't specify how many parking spots we're going to provide, do we?
We do not.
So it just kind of says to build a structure, just generically random, it's kind of, as I, as I sit here and think about that now, maybe we, do you think we should have been more specific?
If we had specific projects identified at that point in time, we could have been more specific, we did not.
Okay. The, I've noticed for that same, going back to the Saddlebag and that same Indian Plaza, they are cutting that off to, they, you, or the city is cutting that off to, from traffic more and more frequently, is that correct? I, I kind of drive by there and you can't, it's big, it's like a loading and unloading, is that happening more?
That area has been subject to construction closures to a very great degree over the last year or so, both capital, city capital projects and development projects going on in that area. We do do periodic closures on the weekends and, and convert segments of that area into pedestrian-only.
That's kind of a temporary loss of several dozens, yeah. There, I noticed there's kind of a blockage for cars on Saddlebag, is that a temporary structure? That those metal bars that are, you know, you know what I'm talking about?
I do. Those are permanent, they're movable, and they were designed to make it a lot more efficient and cost-effective to do those every weekend closures.
Okay. Did you mention, I think you mentioned this, so the Corral at First, the Corral parking lot at First, we have all these names for the parking structures, and I think that people get lost in that, they don't know what you mean by that, and so maybe we could be a little more rudimentary about what we mean as far as parking structures, but the one, basically the Farmers Market, the Corral, what do you call, what do you call that parking structure? Parking corral, thank you.
I've heard parking corral earlier this evening, I heard Farmers Market from Mr. Pejman. And I will tell you, we went through an episode a few years back where we had to make some maintenance improvements, we had to, to fix some problems that had developed in some of our older garage structures, and I had people referring to the Second Street parking garage. We have four parking garages on Second Street.
Right, it's so...
That was incredibly confusing.
It's vague and ambiguous, and it just, it just creates confusion, so...
Right, point, point taken. We could probably do better than that.
When do you, you might have mentioned this, but when did you say, or do, are there plans to add a structure, you know, another level, because you said that would be more cost-effective since we're going vertical?
The available alternatives that we've looked into were the two that I presented, the adding a level or two or three to the Farmers Market parking corral, Second Street Garage, adding structured parking where we have a surface lot at Sixth Avenue.
Okay.
Those are the two that we've evaluated.
Okay.
There could be others. We've evaluated the First Avenue Lot, also referred to frequently as the Panera Bread Lot.
Yeah, the Fuddruckers Lot. Some of us call it Fuddruckers Lot, okay?
But, but we're not pursuing that one because it's just not cost-effective.
Okay. We better make a decision because the $19 million for the downtown parking structure is going to get us about $5 million worth of value at some point?
I agree.
Okay, a couple more items, then I'll, and then I'll conclude my comments, Mayor. I emphatically agree with Councilmember Whitehead on understanding the, okay, what are, what are we calling it? The Galleria parking lot, and how empty it is, how misunderstood it is. Can people park there? Wayfinding signage, understanding how we use it, how it can be accessed. I know there are certain levels that are partitioned off for workers and employees, I get that, but just, you know, some more clarity. And the last comment I would make is, one of the things we know, kind of one of those things that, a secret that everybody knows, is that the, the resorts and the hotels in the downtown, they're supposed to provide parking free of charge to their, to their tenants, is that correct? Because when they build, they have a minimum parking requirement they have to meet, and they don't, and they're not allowed to charge for that. Do you agree?
I'd have to defer to my code experts sitting in the front row here.
Mayor and Councilman Graham, you're correct, the code requires, in the downtown area, that required parking be provided for free.
So we all know that if you, I'm not going to name any resorts, you know, in this forum, but resorts and hotels, they charge for parking, there's a separate fee for it. Do you, have you, has anybody told you that, something similar?
Mayor and Councilman, that, that is something that we heard. The most recent recollection I recall is having discussion around that 2020-21 timeframe when we were looking at the previous code update. Where we did look into it, and our code enforcement did send notices out to, to all those hotels in the community, and my understanding is, is that's been improving.
Yeah.
Or improved, I'm not sure if, if we need to do additional follow-up at this point.
I would like an email to the council, maybe, on who you spoke with, and not, not, I don't want to have to go to it in a meeting, but maybe an email... don't want to have to go to it in a meeting, but maybe an email to council who was spoken with, and compliance rates are increasing or decreasing, because that's a big deal when they're charging illegally for a separate fee for parking, and then if you're going to stay at a hotel, you're just going to park on the street, and that's going to cannibalize our parking. And they are, and so they're basically, they're getting a gift from the city, because they have minimum parking requirements, but they're also, and this is also, as I think of it, and I'm, as I sit here and I'm, I hear myself, this is also an issue, I think, for some of the downtown apartments and condos, apartments particularly, where they have a minimum parking requirement they have to provide, and they are charging their residents an extra fee to park, or it's, they, they're very confused, they're, they're very crafty about the way they kind of frame it, like, it's a, it's a two-bedroom apartment, and we're going to, you get one parking spot free, and then the other one you pay for, and that hurts our availability of public parking. So, I'd like to see something about what we're doing about that, because that could really reduce some of these pressures and stress on our public parking. Do you agree that might be worthwhile?
Sure, yeah, yeah, Mayor and Council, we can certainly look into that and follow-up.
Mr. Mayor, thank you, and Brian and Dan, thank you for your presentation tonight.
Yes, let me move on to City Manager for a comment or two.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Councilwoman Graham. I, I think directly on that, we're happy to provide some written response to council, but many charge what they call a resort fee. And inclusive of the resort fee has multiple things, and normally listed on there is parking. So it's not specifically parking, but called a resort fee. And so many do that throughout the entire community, throughout many communities, so, again, I'll be hesitant to, to share more right at this moment, but I'll, I'll send out a response directly to all of you with the details associated with what those look like, what portion of that resort fee is taxable and not taxable for the tourism tax.
And we talked about that privately.
Yeah, and, and what some of those values are, we continue to see that throughout. And so, I think you'll have a few others coming, and other spots within the community here in the near future, because there's a request to change some perking at one about midstream in the community from north to south. So you'll be seeing more of that, and we'll have more discussion on that, but thank you.
Councilwoman Janik, and then Councilwoman Kapooti.
Thank you, Mayor. I just have a quick question for Brian. You mentioned in-lu parking has been replaced with leased parking? Could you just give me a rough idea how many people are taking advantage of that? Is it a certain location in the city?
Yes, Mayor and Councilwoman Janik, the, currently, the program, I believe there's probably nine or 10 open accounts for in-lu parking with, with different parking owners within the Old Town area. And that program is limited to the, the Old Town Scottsdale area only.
I did have one other question, I don't know if you can answer it, or if anybody can. How is it going with the trolley service in spring training? Are people beginning to ride the trolley more?
Councilwoman Janik, we are tracking that. We got to a slow start, I think we had six people the first day. But I'm seeing, I've looked at the numbers, they, they vary, and I have a hard time explaining. Some, some days, there's a lot of people taking it to the game, some days, there's a lot of people taking it away from the game afterwards. But we'll look for trends and, and give you some feedback at the end of spring training.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Kapooti?
I had good, smart things to say before it was 10 o'clock at night. So excuse me, I don't actually know what I'm going to say now, but, okay, so, you have this slide where you talk about the future, and so I'm going to give you my, my feeling about what we need to do. So I feel pretty strongly that, in general, we have enough parking downtown, it's more about allocation, and I think a lot of people agree with that. I am very supportive of doing something in the entertainment district, because I think that's the biggest problem that we have. If you look at your Slide 8, and you're talking about having 6,200 public parking spaces, these pages are so small, but there's a little spot with 107 in the Galleria area, which is actually gated, and public can't use that. And then there's, I think that says 377, 327, and I know it was brought up already in the Galleria, but if you really go in there and walk around, which others of us have done, I mean, there's like 42 actual public spaces, but they have no time restrictions, so the employees are using those, right? And we all know that the top floors are being empty. There's 46 one-hour parking spots, so employees aren't going to use those, and, and who's going to go in for an hour and actually, you know, park there and do something for an hour? You've got 27 handicap spaces, which is great, but most of them are usually unused, so out of that, 327 and 107, I mean, you're really only talking about maybe 100 spots available there. So I think that, that's a real problem. And then Page 10, just want to make the point, it was, and I didn't know this about the history, but I guess when there were P2, P3 districts, folks were allowed to develop, the city allowed the street parking account towards the parking requirements. So I think that's exacerbated the problem, right? Because since the street parks, since the street parking was being allowed to be used as the public parking, I know I've heard this complaint a million times, but employees are using those, of course. And so that's also kind of constricting that number of available spots. I think that, I also just want to point out, Page 12, you talk, we talk about having 9,000 parking spaces private, and I think this has been brought up as well, I mean, 2,000 of those are in the Galleria. When the Galleria was full, they had over 3,000 employees, you know, this is, this is definitely causing a pinch point. I think that, in general, those, that area, like sort of around the entertainment district, Civic Center Plaza, I don't know how anyone will ever redevelop there if we don't provide a parking structure from the city in that area, because otherwise, it's not going to be cost-effective for someone to redevelop and then provide the parking, and especially in those teeny little areas, right? A lot of those little spots are small and older, and I'm just going to advocate for doing something in that Stetson and Sixth Avenue parking lot, that, that would be my suggestion, I think we need that badly. We have $20 million, some of it that was already used, but that would be my recommendation. I definitely think we need a city lot in that area. Thank you.
Okay, well, I'll conclude with my, my comments. And so, 22 years ago, the subject of the Galleria was on the council's table, and then it was because the Galleria had been closed for 10 years, it was vacant, and there was a commitment for public parking that was not met at that time. And I went into that process, and there was a settlement, because the Galleria owed $1.3 million to the city. And that settlement was signed about 2002, when I was in office, and it called for 134 spaces or so in the Galleria to be permanent for the city as a settlement, and about, I think, 700 or 600 during, for nighttime use. So there was a, a signed contract, and, so if you look at 134 spaces, approximately at 1.3 million, that was like $10,000 a space. However, the city seems to have lost tabs in the last 20 years, and I, as I came back as mayor, I, I have walked the Galleria and asked where those spaces are. Brent Stockwell was very good at pursuing that, and I walked through with the ownership about a week and a half ago at the Galleria to see where those public spaces are on the first and second level. The problem is that part of those are one-hour spaces, and the other part are not marked at all. Now, all public spaces in our parking garage have a three-hour limit, except at the Galleria, or it was not enforced. In other words, we have the right to provide, to, to issue a parking violation now, because it's clearly shown where those parking spaces are. So I, I found out that, you know, number one, we, we have them show, we have them indicated. I'm told that the second, so third level, fourth and up, is open to meet the requirement all night. Now, that's what I'm told, because there was a nighttime use part of that settlement with the Galleria people. So the first step would be, and I, and I personally walked it, so the first step is, can we, and should those spaces be marked as a three-hour limit? As city spaces, you will, you will receive a ticket. I think they should be, they're not marked now, right? So that would require us to police that area, just as we do for any street parking where there's a three-hour limit. They would just be able to go in there and, and issue citations or whatever. The other aspect, so that, that could clear potentially public use, and there's a large sign that says, "Public parking, visitor and tenant," and it's all on one sign, so when people go in there, they'll just, if they're a visitor, a tenant, or a public person, they'll just use the spaces. And I think we need to restrict our own for, as we would under the parking garages at Fifth Avenue or at Second, Second Street, for the three hours. We, the, the real question is not necessarily the number of spaces, it's the turnover of spaces. That's why we're able to have free spaces, but then say, every three hours, you know, you've got to move and let the next person in for the lunch or the dinner crowd. Overall, the, I think the assessment is, we will need to look at some results, one possibility, so, we need a clarification with the Galleria on the nighttime use, because those are associated with the bar district. However, the other trend is that people don't want to drink and drive, it's too expensive, you get caught, it's 11 grand, the second time it's 24 grand, the third time, you know, you, you lose all that. So people are using more Uber for the bar district, simply because they don't want to be caught and then have all those problems. The, the other issue, so, I think we should be looking at, not a reduced parking requirement, but by the time you add employees into bars and, or restaurants, there's, there's over 100 employees in many of these restaurants, and they're not even accounted for, you know, in the, in the parking count. So we need to, I think, start to quantify what is in the Galleria parking garage. They did, apparently, they added, I believe, two other levels of parking voluntarily, because they had additional office space, and that's over and above, but we, we need to look at that, and they are amenable to marking them, obviously. They did it for me when I asked for it, and, and now we walked through it with, with Brent to, to verify that. But there's no policing of it. And I know the second level is full of likely, you know, employee parking. Now, as public parking, it would probably be a good idea if the employees of other surrounding businesses would be parking there, not just the Galleria employees that would have to move every three hours or whatever it is, but I think there is a service to having that public parking in a parking lot that's owned by the city. I know that sounds a little bit convoluted, I totally agree about the resort fee, the problem is they try to reduce the room rate, because it's related to the bed tax. So they low, they, they, they reduce that, and they call it a resort fee, and then they upcharge right there, and they get, they get, they get more profit with that. So that's an issue that we had brought up, and I'm glad you, you have as well. And at this point, I would say, I would, I don't see any other hands up, I believe we are concluded, and I would ask for a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Thank you, second. And all in favor? Indication. We are adjourned.